Hello and welcome to the Bridgewater Raritan Council of School Associations Candidates Night for the Board of Education. I'm May Niles.
And I'm John Chick.
This year, we have five candidates seeking election for three open Bridgewater positions for the Bridgewater Raritan Board of Education.
The candidates are William Atkins, Philip Jones, AJ Joshi, Jeremy Lee, and Jennifer Lockren.
The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement, which may include personal and professional background, reasons for seeking election, and what the candidate feels their role will be on the board. Following the opening statements, the candidates will answer three questions. Each candidate will be given up to three minutes to answer each question. Following the three questions, each candidate will be given two minutes to give a closing statement. In the interest of time, John and I request that the time limits be adhered to throughout the evening. We will hold our hands up when each candidate has thirty seconds remaining. So please try to complete statements when you see one of our hands. Let's go to the opening statements, beginning with Mr. Atkins.
Good evening and thank you to the teachers, parents, and students who made this event possible. I'm William Atkins, and tonight I stand before you not just as a candidate, but as a proud member of our community. From my first day at Grin to my graduation from high school, every classroom, every teacher, and every hallway left an indelible mark on my heart. I stand here because I believe it's time to give back to every community that gave me everything. But my story is not unique. It's part of something bigger. It's part of our Bridgewater story. A story of families who come here because they want what's best for their kids. A story of teachers who go above and beyond to inspire dreams. Of a community that rallies together, not just in times of celebration, but in times of challenge. Just this year, this narrative continues to be written with our very own VR students answering the calls to serve their communities. Stories of bringing hope to young cancer patients. Of developing apps for local sustainability and of donating much-needed resources to those in need. As a high school student myself, I champion statewide legislation to expand civic engagement to make all these things ever more possible. You see, I believe every child deserves a chance to succeed and to continue our shared legacy. Tonight, I'm asking you to join me on a mission, to protect what makes our community great, but also to confront the challenges we face head-on. Our youth face threats, both physical and mental, that didn't exist before. Since Columbine, 378,000 individuals have faced gun violence in schools, and nearly a quarter of students have considered suicide in the past year. We must demand better, more security to ensure our schools are sanctuaries of learning, not a theater. More support so that no student feels like they're facing their battles alone. And more transparency because when the community understands and trusts the decisions being made, we are stronger together. You see, Bridgewater has always been a place where excellence thrives. But excellence is not a destination, it's a journey. It's a promise that we renew every generation, and it's up to us to ensure we keep that promise for the next generation and the one after that. I'm running because I believe in the promise of Bridgewater. I believe in our students, in our teachers, in our community. But more importantly, I believe that together, we can write the next chapter in our Bridgewater story. A chapter where every child is safe, supported, and prepared for the future. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Philip Jones, and I'm running for the board because I'm passionate about public education and I want the Bridgewater schools to be the best they can be. My background ideally suits me for this role. I'm a child of a public school teacher, graduated from Governor Livingston in nearby Berkeley Heights before studying English literature and history at a small liberal arts college in western Pennsylvania. I found my way to the humanities because despite my interests and participation in gifted and talented programs in elementary school, I had a very negative experience with math and science in later years. And I want to make sure that my own children have all the options available to them as they progress through school. After college, I somewhat accidentally fell into a role as an aide in an elementary school in neighboring Warren Township, where I discovered a strong desire and ability to teach. Went to graduate school, earned a master's degree in elementary education for Rutgers. Afterwards, I was hired at the same Warren district where I got my start and proceeded to teach full-day kindergarten. Yes, that was a thing twenty years ago in the town right next door. Then I taught first grade, third grade, fourth and fifth grades, as well as gifted and talented classes over the next nineteen years. During that span, the school that I worked at was awarded a national blue ribbon from the U.S. Department of Education in 2017. And I'm not ashamed to say that the cover photo of the application for that award included me in a squirrel costume. Just some of the things teachers do for our profession. I also personally earned the Governor's Educator of the Year Award in 2122, of which I'm exceptionally proud because it recognized my work in adapting to the challenges of the pandemic and helping my students and their families return to normalcy afterwards. In addition to my work in the classroom, I was also elected vice president of my local teachers association and still serve in that capacity, as well as serving as negotiation chair for the past two collective bargaining contracts. In those roles, I'm an advocate for my profession and my colleagues, and I have built positive and rewarding relationships with the members of the Board Administration. I guess I should probably mention my family as well. I have two kids in the district, one in elementary and one intermediate, and my wife convinced me to run for the board as supportive. I've run scout then, I've coached baseball, and as a board member, I hope to bring my expertise as an educator by pragmatism, as a negotiator and advocate, and a parent-centric approach. What I mean by that is that when confronted with an issue, I always try to look at it and say, "What if my child were in that situation?" That has helped me navigate many situations in my professional and personal life with empathy and seriousness, and I will bring those same qualities to the Board of Education.
Hello, my name is AJ Joshi, and I'm running for reelection for the Bridgewater Raritan Board of Education. My family and I moved to Bridgewater eight years ago, and one of the main reasons was excellent schools. I come from a family of teachers, and education is near and dear to my heart. I have served on various boards of education totaling thirteen years, and during my tenure, not only on this Board of Education, but on other boards as well, I have advocated for students' education first. To me, kids and their academic progress come before anything. At every Board of Education reorganization meeting held in January, the board members, old and new, are required to read a total of ten New Jersey School Board Member Court of Ethics. This evening, I'm going to read number six, and it states, "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends." I have upheld the Court of Ethics for all of the years I have served on the Board of Education. And if reelected, I will continue to uphold this Court of Ethics. Board of Education is a serious matter, and I'm saddened to see politics being infused in education. Instead, we should be focusing more on our students and their successes. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to take the opportunity to thank the moderators and the people working the AV equipment for taking time out of your busy evenings to make this candidate's night possible. I'm sure many of you have plenty of homework to do after this, so hopefully we can wrap things up quickly here.
My name is Jeremy Lee, and I'm a lifelong resident of Bridgewater. I'm the son of two hard-working immigrants, and I saw firsthand the hard-working spirit that enables my parents' American dream. And also the barriers and the opportunities immigrant families work through and contribute as a part of our diverse community. I'm a proud panther, having gone through our public school system and graduated from BRHS three short years ago. At school, I was involved in all sorts of activities, from orchestra to debate. And as a recent graduate of BRHS, I understand the challenges students face in our schools today, and I'm committed to bringing a fresh, real-life perspective to the challenges and opportunities facing our district. Right now, I'm a senior at Rutgers University, studying finance at the Business School in New Brunswick. And on campus, I am deeply involved in the governance of my school. Having represented and advocated for the interest of more than 5,000 undergraduate business school students as a student senator in the university senate. There, I ordered my fellow senators to develop information technology policies designed to improve the technology experiences of thousands of students and staff. I was also a member of the allocations committee for the Rutgers Business Government Association, making sure that student feeding money was being allocated to school organizations in a fiscally responsible manner while properly funding programs. I believe in educational excellence and individual support for all students, whether or not they're in our gen ed, special ed, or gifted programs. And in various capacities, I have a track record of serving in roles as an advocate fighting for the interests of the broad community, and I will afford to bring my unique contributions and perspectives to our Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, May and John. That was a lovely introduction, and like you, I was a student here in Bridgewater. My upbringing in Bridgewater and my experience as a student in this district during a period of profound change have played a crucial role in shaping my identity. I remember a time when our town was divided, not by ideologies, elections, or social media debates, but by an imaginary line that separated two rivals, high school east and high school west. When the merger was announced, there were disagreements. But what I remember were the posters on the walls of Eisenhower School about unity, coming together, voting on our new mascot and our new school colors, black, silver, red. There was a palpable sense of panther pride in the new Bridgewater Raritan district, but there were also challenges. A whole new school had to be built, and it would take two years, they said. So we were all crammed together at what is now middle school. Getting into class was like bumper-to-bumper traffic. It was so hot. Also, there were more students with fewer spots on teams, in specialized classes, and in programs. But despite the challenges, we were hopeful and excited. Well, two years became three, then four. And unfortunately, the class of 1995 never got to experience the new campus as promised.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Lockren. Currently, I am vice president of the Bridgewater Raritan Board of Education, and I am running for reelection. Having lived through the district's transformation from rivalry to unity and a disappointment of unrealized promises, I am committed to seeing construction projects from a referendum get completed on time and on budget. These renovations will create new opportunities for families and future generations to come. And I am also dedicated to fostering a strong community. Because no matter what divides us, one thing has always united us since the days of the First Panthers: We are VR. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And now for the first question. What are the strengths of BRSC that need to be preserved and protected because they directly contribute to the district's success and whatever opportunities for growth? Please name two in each area. We will start this round with Mr. Jones.
Like many parents, the pandemic created a lot of struggles for my family. I can also appreciate that it was a difficult task for the district as a whole to navigate those challenges. Four years later, I'm very pleased that the work that has been done to recover from that and the work that has been done to recover from that difficult situation. The current Board and Superintendent of Years have made significant improvements in our school district. We all see it in the facility upgrades at our schools, expansions and programming, enhanced communications with families and successes of our students. The implementation of full-day kindergarten alone would have been a huge success, but improvements made to every facility have made our children and us proud to say that we attend Bridgewater schools. This includes landscaping, playground upgrades, interior refurbishments, and necessary improvements like roofs, doors, and windows. Let's not forget secure vestibules, which are unfortunately necessary these days. Our programs have also improved, including additional gifted education opportunities like small group investigations and cluster math groupings for our elementary students, and increased options at the high school level for dual enrollment classes, allowing students to earn college credit through high school courses. This is huge for working parents like me, who are all going to have to deal with the rising costs of higher education. I'm also pleased with the growth of programs that provide necessary support for students who struggle academically, or emotionally, or those with special needs. Programs like Unified Sports, Enhanced Counseling, and simply our wonderful teachers giving their time to help students are all examples of how the school district is providing support when needed. All of these improvements and strengths in our district have yielded results, like our state championship baseball team, our well-informed and professional high school student representatives, who I had the pleasure of seeing in action at the Board of Education meeting recently. Improvements in our testing results, our robotics team winning championships, and more. Those results will continue as referendum projects are progressively rolled out in ensuing years. With so much going on, going right in the Bridgewater school, it would be easy to rest, but there's more work to do. We need to train more teachers in reading interventions, like Orton Gillingham, which helps students with dyslexia but offers benefits to all readers. We also need to expand our gifted programs and include AI programs in every school, so families of gifted learners don't have to choose between their child attending their community school with their peers and then receiving the academic programs they need. With full-day kindergarten and the need to shift grade levels between buildings, there's also a great opportunity to offer foreign languages and instrumental music programs earlier without a huge price tag, since the teachers are already there in buildings. We also need to talk about the elephant in the room. Racism, antisemitism, and other forms of discrimination are happening in our schools. We need to devote resources to training teachers how to effectively communicate the ideals that our district stands for so they can help build positive pro-social behaviors in our kids. In doing so, we will create a safer environment for learning for marginalized children. The Board's adoption of a new character education program and revisions to the Code of Conduct this year are great first steps, but we need to keep it going. The most important strength which is embedded in all of this is that we have a diverse, nonpartisan board that works together to solve problems and is responsible for all of this positive change. I've tried to uphold that tradition of nonpartisanship by running a campaign that focuses on real issues for Bridgewater and by not accepting funds or endorsements from political organizations or outsiders. And I'm proud to say, I've placed signs on properties across the political spectrum. And I have support from a wide range of viewpoints, because people are more important than politics.
So there are so many strengths in our district, from excellent AI programs, gifted and talented programs, to our arts and athletics, and let's not forget our teachers. We also have excellent special education programs as well. We consistently rank as the best community for music education. And I'm thrilled to say that now in 2026, we'll have full-day kindergarten. So there isn't just two that I can name. There's so many more. But I know there are a few areas very important to the parents in our district. This includes advanced classes from elementary school, the gifted and talented program, the AI programs. These programs really solidify our students and build a foundation for academic success as they move up the ladder towards high school. And at the high school, we have robust advanced placement and honors programs, as well as a growing dual enrollment program as well. I have always supported these programs, and in fact, I have supported the expansion of these programs in the last few years, like the dual enrollment program at the high school. I will continue to educate for these, so as long as I'm on the board. I have been on the academic community for the past four years, and I would like to say that we have many strengths, so I just can't count two of them, and we should work hard every year to preserve and improve and protect all of them. The second one that I can pick if I have to is our excellent teachers. Without our teachers, none of the programs I mentioned before, as Mr. Jones has indicated, would be possible without these teachers. Our students would not be able to perform as well as they have been without these excellent, excellent teachers. And if reelected, I will work hard to preserve and protect resources for our teachers. The growth in our gifted and talented program has occurred because we are testing all students now and offering enrichment opportunities to a greater number of students. And I believe there is room for even more improvement in these areas. I also want to see growth in programs that offer hands-on experiences, more practical classes that provide training in the traits. I think this would be an excellent area for growth, and if reelected, I will do my best to introduce these programs to help students with the various traits, as I think it has become a all-star. Thank you.
One of the greatest strengths in our school district are undisputedly our students. The talent of our students shows through in academic achievement and in our extracurricular programs. Our students are highly motivated to work hard and excel in their individual areas of interest. For example, we have students receiving national merit scholarships, winning academic awards, and winning sports competitions such as the baseball state championships. Another strength is our dedicated teachers and the large range of academic programs our district offers. For example, we have an excellent computer science program. To illustrate how impressive this program is, Governor Murphy visited our high school to see for himself how amazing this program really is. We have some of the best computer science resources available for students, from technology to teachers that have helped make our computer science program a leader in our state. Our programs have even contributed to the success of many tech entrepreneurs that have once called Bridgewater home. One area for growth we can focus on is promoting communication and transparency. I believe that our board has an obligation to be upfront with the community about the incidents happening in our schools. That starts with parents being fully informed about their children and what they are learning in school. Parents deserve to know if their child visited the nurse's office for playground scratch just as much as if their child changed the name used in school. Another area for growth is expanding evidence-based mental health resources because students continue to face mental health challenges. As a student, having faced my own struggles, I empathize with the students who are struggling with mental health and believe that more can be done to ensure that evidence-based mental health approaches with tangible results are available for all students. We should be working closely with families, who are the most important support system for all students, to tackle these mental health challenges together as a community.
The greatest strength of the Bridgewater Raritan School District is our people. From the students in the classrooms to those rehere in the VR TV studio, they are why we are here tonight. Serving on the board has been a privilege that has allowed me to witness firsthand the incredible talent and dedication in our district. I've seen our student representatives engage in a meaningful civic discourse and have enjoyed attending games, theater productions, robotics competitions, unified sports and music programs. The breadth of talent and opportunities here are truly remarkable. This success is driven by the unwavering commitment of our educators, staff, administration, program advisors, coaches, and the parents who tirelessly volunteer and fundraise through PTOs, CSA, and parent associations. Thanks to these efforts, we're making steady progress in graduation rates, academic programs, extracurricular activities, and facility enhancements. Improvements like the high school parking lot, grandstands at Basilone Field, and the new windows at our elementary school are reigniting the strong sense of our collective pride. While challenges lie ahead, we are on a promising path. The district-wide introduction of full-day kindergarten in 2026 will elevate early learning and help position us as not just one of the best, but the best. We are VR embodies our collective spirit. It means that we are all in this together, committed to fostering a culture where everyone is represented and every individual feels valued. Together, we're not just shaping the future, we're empowering our students to make a lasting impact on the world.
Bridgewater is a town of opportunity. It's a place where schools don't just teach, they transform. I know this because I'm a proud product of the Bridgewater Raritan School District. Our quality of education is remarkable. Thanks to dedicated teachers and rigorous coursework, I'm able to use classes taken at the high school to be a semester ahead in higher education, saving on college tuition. New programs with RVCC and TCNJ aren't the worst to do just that for even more Bridgewater students. That's the power of an excellent education, and it's a strength we must protect. Though it's not just the academics, our students shine because of many opportunities we provide, whether in the arts, sports, or any other extracurriculars. We offer students the chance to explore and grow, and I think that's remarkable. This year, VR alum Casey Murphy won gold at the Olympics for soccer, and our BRHS baseball team won a state championship. A VR student was honored as part of an congressional art competition, and another won the Governor's Award for Visual Art. Our music department and computer science programs are award-winning, and many other teams and individuals have attained impressive accolades for their hard work. But even as we celebrate these things, we must confront some areas in need of improvement. Our students need to be secure from the physical and mental health threats posed by today's day. We need comprehensive support to improve student life in every school and ensure that every child knows they are valued, seen, and safe. And finally, we must address the issue of transparency and fiscal responsibility. We must fully fund our students for the highest quality education we can afford. However, a $183 million budget requires high spending and high scrutiny. In a community like Bridgewater, trust is everything. I will push the district to foster open and effective communication with parents and community stakeholders while holding the district accountable for its actions. Our school must ensure transparency in decision-making processes, fund allocation, and school policies. There are challenges before us, and these are the opportunities. We have the power to preserve and elevate what's working while tackling what's not. Together, we can make Bridgewater schools not just a place of learning, but a beacon of opportunity, safety, and trust for every member of our community.
Thank you, everyone. And now for the second question. Regarding the district's transportation issues over the past few years, what are some changes that you would make to ensure students make it to school on time and arrive at home on time? We will start this round with Mr. Joshi.
So with transportation, so after the world came back from COVID, the school transportation took a big hit. This was not just a Bridgewater Raritan problem. This was a statewide and a nationwide problem. Many bus drivers either retired or found their jobs. This had an adverse effect on school transportation. The district has tried very hard to retain drivers. The school administration has also proactively secured bus contracts with private school bus companies as well. The transportation survey is in the process of being conducted so that when full-day kindergarten starts in 2026, the district will have a better and efficient transportation system in place. Furthermore, the middle school will have an addition of sixth grade. This move will give the district the opportunity to revamp and redesign transportation in our district for the better. Again, the transportation survey will provide guidance for the change in the next two years. And with changing technology, there will be mechanisms put in place that will allow parents to make sure that the kids are coming to school and coming home on time. Thank you. Thank you.
As a community, we should be focused on transporting students to school safely, efficiently, and on time with the class, in the morning, and back home in the afternoon. Bridgewater is a big town with a vast road network, and therefore supporting and transporting 8,000 students twice a day on public roads is no easy task. And with the road improvements happening across our town, there are many factors that truly are beyond the board's control. With that being said, our school district is doing a much better job this year with the transportation. And as I understand, this comes mostly from better transportation management, which I hope will continue. I understand that with the new additions in the tracking system for our buses, which I think is necessary for enabling better school bus transportation management, which I think is a positive step and the right direction. With new trucking equipment and improved dispatching management system and a new notification system, I expect our school buses to continue transporting students between their homes and schools safely, efficiently, and on time. To ensure we continue to transport students in that manner going forward, I would also like to see improved training for our school bus drivers to enable continuous improvement in our school bus transportation operations. Working with our contractors and our partners to focus on making the system better every day, to ensure that we continue to transport students in a smooth manner going forward.
So addressing transportation challenges is no easy task, especially amid the ongoing shortage of drivers. However, the district is making progress, and with significant changes ahead, including reach shifts to support full-day kindergarten, there's an opportunity to build on that momentum. I believe that we can continue advancing by exploring shared services with neighboring districts, investing in technology to improve our route efficiency and communication, and implementing real-time tracking and notifications. Additionally, we must keep up our efforts to recruit and retain drivers through competitive pay, flexible hours, and comprehensive training programs. On a personal note, as a parent with children in the district, I am deeply grateful for our bus drivers, for their dedication to safety and getting our kids to and from school. Thank you.
Transportation should never be an obstacle to education. And it should be more reliable so that parents opt to put their kids on the bus than to drive them to and from school. I'd like to see optimized bus routes using updated technology, ensuring efficiency, reducing travel times, and increasing public confidence in our transportation system. We must strengthen our partnerships with transportation providers to guarantee that all buses are fully staffed and reliable. Every student deserves to arrive at school ready to learn and return home safely without delay. I'd also like to see a return of the late bus at the middle school to alleviate the stresses on working parents. As a student, I'm very grateful to all the hard-working bus staff who brought me to and from school every day. It's time to prioritize this issue though and make the necessary changes to serve our community. Thank you.
Trying to keep this brief because I have been droning on. First, this has never been one of my good qualities. I personally never had issues with the transportation of my kids to or from school. A big shout out to Mrs. Dean and Mrs. Iris, who have gotten my kids to school and from school safely for years. I know it's a very difficult job, anyone who's ever ridden on a school bus knows. But I recognize that some families have had a different experience. I know the district has already planned a transportation audit for this year to assess efficiency of bus routes, determine solutions for driver staffing shortages, and assess safety of bus stops, as they should periodically. In the district that I work in, they completed a similar audit during the pandemic to limit children's exposures in close quarters and then drastically reduce travel time. It also fixed inefficiencies like students being last on the bus despite living closest to the school. Sometimes these things can look better on paper, but community input and analysis of current practices can yield positive results. As I mentioned before, making sure that every neighborhood school is able to provide the services that every child in that school needs, such as AI or special education instruction, helps to streamline the transportation to and from school. If we can make positive changes to programming alongside the discussion about transportation, the two can influence each other and create a broader scope that serves the community better.
Thank you, everyone. And now for the third and final question. What do you uniquely bring to our students as a candidate? We will start this round with Mr. Lee.
As a recent graduate of our schools, I understand the opportunities and challenges facing our students in our schools. I can put myself directly in the shoes of our students and empathize with them. I know what it's like to face mental health challenges as a student, and I know what it's like feeling uncomfortable to go to the bathroom in school, and I know how stressful it is managing things like SAT prep, debate prep, and college essays can be. I've been there before, and I'm ready to bring a real-life, fresh perspective to addressing the unique challenges facing our students today. I'm also in tune with the rising challenges facing our schools. And as a student senator, I was one of the first to recognize the challenges posed by artificial intelligence on my campus. And I was part of a committee that helped shape how information technology was used across our university. Artificial intelligence can be a double-edged sword that demands a need for guardrails and guidelines to protect our students. And as a school board member, I'm ready to leverage my experiences in university governance to address suppressing challenges facing our students. As a board member, I'll be an honest voice for our community. I'm not afraid of standing up for the interests of students, teachers, parents, taxpayers, and our community here in Bridgewater. I'm not afraid of pointing out and recognizing the problems with the intention of addressing them for the benefit of our school community. I believe we, as a school district, should have a growth mindset where we can be open to acknowledging problems and striving to be the best. I will welcome voices from our entire school community, be positive or constructive criticism, and I will gladly listen to issues being brought up as a first step into looking into them rather than dismissing them.
Having lived through the district's transformation from rivalry to unity, I bring a unique perspective shaped by a lifetime of community involvement in my hometown of Bridgewater, along with firsthand experience as the current vice president of the Board of Education. And as the only woman candidate running for three open positions, I bring valuable leadership experience, perspective, and a dedication to addressing the needs of our students and families. I'm deeply passionate about creating spaces where young people can thrive. As a founder of BR Skates Foundation and a skateboarding coach, I've dedicated myself to providing recreational opportunities as well as stewardship and mentorship programs that empower youth to engage in civic discourse and active community participation. In my role as the chairwoman of the Bridgewater Parks Board, I have successfully advocated for inclusive playground equipment at Chimney Rock and organized the annual Can You Dig It Community Earth Day Experience. Additionally, I'm currently enrolled in the Somerset Leadership Program, where our class project, Wrestle Digs, is focused on revitalizing the living spaces of at-risk youth experiencing homelessness. Through these issues, I'm committed to fostering vibrant culture, a sense of belonging, and a supportive community to ensure that every young person has the opportunity to grow, connect, and succeed.
First, I'd like to thank all the candidates who have stepped up to serve our community. In particular, I'm truly honored to run alongside Board Vice President Jennifer Lockren. The board is lucky to have someone who cares so deeply about our community. As for myself, I may be the youngest candidate, but I believe that's what sets me apart. I bring not only energy, but a fresh, informed perspective, one that's grounded in recent firsthand experience in our schools, and the only candidate who has experienced BR education both before and after the COVID pandemic. I understand the unique challenges our students face today because I've lived through them. From navigating remote learning to adjusting back to in-person classes, I've experienced the shifts in the education system and how they've impacted the students, both academically and emotionally. Beyond that, I've spent my time actively contributing to the community and advocating for meaningful change, such as through my appointment to the New Jersey Legislative U Council. I've also had the privilege of working on the Bridgewater Township Planning Board, where I learned how decisions made at a local level have long-term impacts on the community. These roles have given me invaluable insight to governance, policymaking, and the need for transparency. And of course, there's my commitment to civic engagement. Through my legislative work, I've demonstrated a clear understanding of how the system works and how to make a difference. I've always thought to prioritize the youth in our community, and I'm ready to bring that same level of advocacy to the board yet. What makes me uniquely suited for this role is my deep connection to our students, my firsthand experience navigating the evolving educational landscape, and my record of driving action. I'm not just passionate about creating change, I've done it. And I believe my ability to bridge the perspectives of both students and policymakers will help us address the real issues our district faces, from school safety to student well-being and academic excellence. Thank you.
As the only person up here who is a teacher, parent, and taxpayer, I have a unique ability to look at things through multiple perspectives, and I have more skin in the game in our schools than anyone else. As a teacher, I have an in-depth knowledge about the educational issues affecting schools and students. I will always put the education of our students, which is our primary directive, as well as their health and well-being at the top of my list of priorities. I've seen what works and what doesn't in the district I work in and can make suggestions based on that. For instance, the Warren School District recently applied for several grants from the state and unlocked resources to fund free, yes, free, before-and-after-school tutoring for at-risk students at no cost to parents. I'm fortunate enough to have the chance to provide that tutoring, which is a nice additional income to supplement my modest teacher salary. By tasking administration with seeking out opportunities like this, we could be increasing our students' academic success while simultaneously helping our teachers, both financially and with their ability to extend student learning in the classrooms. As a parent, my children's futures depend on strong, successful schools. There's no greater trust than that of a parent, that their children will learn and be safe at school throughout their youth. Our schools are already excellent, as evidenced by the enthusiasm of our Bridgewater graduates running for the board. But I've also heard from numerous parents about their children not having the best possible experience, and we need to live up to the mission statement of teaching them one and all. A previous superintendent of mine once told me that having children would change the way that I teach. It's done far more than that, and I will look at every situation through the eyes of a parent first and always think, what if this were my child? As a taxpayer, especially one living on a teacher's salary, I am keenly aware of the financial burden that schools place on residents and homeowners in particular. As economic tides ebb and flow, schools need to be consistent and steadfast in their dedication to affordability. That can and should include smart investment in infrastructure and program improvement like our referendum did. And I was pleased to see that our current board has decreased the overall tax rate required to run our school in recent years. Unfortunately, at the same time, we saw the valuation of our homes inexplicably increase exponentially, which caused a net increase in taxes, but our school board can only control what they can control. With my position as a teacher, a parent, and a taxpayer, I have more invested in and more to lose if the schools are not managed well than anyone else running for the board. Those are the reasons I'm running. I'm not building a resume for a future in politics or looking for personal or professional gain. Can my opponents all say the same thing? My only focus is on our kids and schools and making both the best they can be. Thank you all for taking the time to become informed voters, and thank you to the student moderators and all involved with BR TV for this opportunity. Good night.
I'll keep this short. I bring experience, commitment, and integrity to the Board of Education. When I first ran for Board of Education, I did so for our students. That's it. Students come first for me. I come from a family of teachers, as I've said before, and I value education. I believe that children come to school with a blank slate. Their minds are like an open field awaiting seeds of knowledge. As a board member, my responsibility is and has been to provide every resource available to our teachers so that we prepare our students for future success. So I completely understand my role as a Board of Education member, as I've been on it for 13 years. That is, that students always come first. Thank you.
There's a saying alumni of BR just like to say, once a panther, always a panther. And I'm incredibly proud to call myself a panther. I'm running because our rankings as a school district are not as high as they have been. And I want to make sure students get to experience the high standards of education I had the opportunity to experience as a student. As a board member, I'm committed to protecting our tradition of delivering educational excellence by invigorating academic rigor, promoting critical thinking, empowering parents, and fostering public-private partnership opportunities for all students. Our school should be preparing all students for life beyond the classroom, and that requires our board staying ahead of the curve when it comes to technology. Tech is still rapidly changing, and with AI, making sure that we're keeping up with advanced technologies in our classrooms is a requirement to make sure students remain competitive beyond graduation. We also need to make sure that we work closely with parents, as they play a meaningful role in the lives of their children. Ultimately, the bus stops with families, and making sure that we're promoting policies and programs designed to empower our parents should be a priority. And that starts with transparent communication with families and taxpayers. Bridgewater is a big town, but our shared values of putting family first and taking care of one another are what constitutes the fabric of our amazing community here. I will be protector of family values here in Bridgewater because ultimately, they are what make our school district one of the best in this state. At the end of the day, my campaign isn't about me or promoting any political agenda. It's about delivering educational excellence for our families and putting education first. To learn more, visit www.leeforboe.com and remember to vote Lee for BoE in column three.
Thank you, everyone. And now for our closing statements for this evening. We will begin with Ms. Lockren.
I will push back on more skin in the game, and I don't think any candidate is qualified to speak for the rest of us on why we're here and why we're running. So as you prepare to cast your vote this November, I encourage you to reflect on who truly represents your interests as a stakeholder, and most importantly, the interests of our students. When you review your ballot, please go all the way over to the last column and vote for me, Jennifer Lockren, and my running mate, Mr. William Atkins. I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the BR TV students, May, John, Frank, and Miles, and also the advisors, faculty, the CSA, and administration for bringing us together tonight and for the outstanding work that you do. I also want to thank the Board of Education and my fellow members, my fellow incumbent who has mentored me, as well as my fellow candidates. Together, let's continue to cultivate Panther pride and create a brighter future for our students. Have a wonderful evening, and we are BR. Have a wonderful evening, and we are BR.
First off, I'd like to echo Jen's words, but as we come to the end of tonight, I want to take a moment to reflect on the way we began. Earlier, I spoke about the Bridgewater story, a story of families, students, teachers, and a community that has always come together to push for a better tomorrow. This community shaped me, and now I'm asking you to join me in shaping its future. I believe in the potential of every student who walks through our schools. I've been in their shoes, and I know that with the right support, guidance, and opportunities, they can achieve anything. But this cannot happen in isolation. It takes community to build the future. Together, we can make sure our schools are places where every child feels safe, where every voice is heard, and where excellence is not just a goal, but a standard. I'm running for the Board of Education because I want to be part of that mission. I want to fight for the transparency, safety, and mental health resources our students need to succeed. So I'm asking you tonight to please visit my website at www.athkins4br.org, that's the number four, or reach out to me directly at atkins4br@gmail.com. Ask questions, share your ideas, and most importantly, join me in this journey. Let's work together to build the future our children deserve. Because Bridgewater's story isn't just about the past, it's about what we do next, and I believe the best chapters are still ahead. I'd be honored to have your support, Phil Lockren and Atkins, in column number four. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank everyone for giving us all the opportunity to share our visions for the district and where we would like the district to go. It's been a pleasure to be up here with you, already taking far too much of your time. But I just wanted to remind everyone that I am a teacher, I am a parent, I am a taxpayer. Don't forget November 5th to vote if you haven't already, and have a great night.
First, thank you to CSA, thank you to all the students. I wish I had this when I was in high school back in the eighties. And Jennifer, thank you for the kind words. And you have my number, call me, we will lose anytime. We'll chat. This June, I was fortunate to give the commencement speech at the high school graduation. In this speech, I requested the young graduates to reject divisiveness, prejudice, and hate. I implored them to embrace kindness and to be kind to each other and to their fellow human beings. Tonight, I'm urging all of you to do just that. Please be kind, as it won't cost you anything. As I've said earlier, students and education come first for me. These two reasons are why I have been involved in Board of Education. I have always advocated for students and teachers, and if re-elected, I will continue to provide every resource available to them. Thank you, and thank you again for your support.
We'd like to thank all the candidates for being here with us tonight, giving our audience insight into their positions and the issues involving education here in Bridgewater River River. On behalf of the Council Schools Association, I'd like to encourage everyone to vote in the school board election during the general elections on Tuesday, November 5th. Please make sure every effort to get out the vote. Again, thank you to all the candidates for sharing your evening with us, and thank you for all watching this presentation. The Council Schools Association and BRTV. I'm John Chek.
And I'm May Niles.
Good night.